Call the meeting order. I apologize, my memo today assumed we had other business tonight and I see that we don't, so it's good. We'll get this done quicker. Uh, so call order, the meeting of the Cohasset Planning Board for October nine, twenty twenty four, alphabetical roll call, please.
Clark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan here.
Amy Glassmire here.
Deidre Hobson here.
Birgit Smith-Bisher here.
All right, so um must we read a public hearing notice for each one individually, or is it collective, or how are we doing this?
Um, it is one public hearing notice. Let me.
This is your, you're on stage now, and I really appreciate you reading these public hearing notices. It's a thankless job.
I don't mind doing it. Um, typically I read it off of the website, but for whatever reason, my laptop hasn't been having issues with Chrome. Um, so now I'm gonna have to log into the planning drive, which is a roundabout way.
It's on our agenda.
Which I can only access either via the internet or the planning drive.
You want me to read it from the top of our agenda?
Uh, it's technically the public hearing notice if you have access to the internet.
Yeah, it's on the agenda. Do you want me to do it?
I think the public hearing. Uh, I don't know if I copy and pasted it from the public hearing notice. I think I edited it.
Looks like you did. Looks like it's all here.
I mean, the information would essentially be the same. But, oh, and Kevin is here. All right, let me try one more thing. You know what I'll do?
Hi, that link wasn't working for me. The, the one on the URL, the URL, the long URL string on the agenda.
You haven't missed anything, Kevin. Oh, it's one of those meetings, huh?
That's my fault. I'm actually just going to pull it up on my phone.
I mean, I can read it off the agenda if that's sufficient.
That's fine. And then I have to have IT look at my computer. Okay, let's see. Here we go. Everybody ready for a really long notice?
Yep.
You're gonna have to read all of that? Oh, my gosh. I, I was, I was gonna volunteer. I'm glad I didn't.
It's, it's a doozy. All right. Pursuant to section five of MGL, chapter forty A, the planning board will hold a public hearing on the Zoom platform. Webinar ID eight, four, four, six, seven, six, seven, five, three, two, four, password six, three, six, one, two, three. On Wednesday, October ninth, twenty twenty four, at six thirty PM on the following proposals to amend the Cohasset zoning bylaws. PB one, amendments to Article ten point one, wind energy, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws to reorganize and update the provisions of Article ten point one. Proposed changes include, one, updates to special permit and site plan review requirements for large turbine regulations over five hundred kilowatts. Two, regulations surrounding signage on turbines. Three, regulations for removal of turbines upon abandonment or discontinuation of use. Four, removal of some bylaw language into a more easily amendable regulations document. PB two, amendments to Article ten point two, solar energy, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws to reorganize and update the provisions of Article ten point two. Proposed changes include, one, updates to special permit and site plan review applications and plan requirements. And two, removal of some bylaw language into a more easily amendable regulations document. PB three, amendments to Article nine point three, floodplain and watershed protection district. Amendment is to bring the bylaw into compliance with the state's regulations. All changes are housekeeping in nature. PB four, amendments to Article nine point one, land alteration. Intent is to maximize exposed ledge protection and limit exemptions from a special permit being required. Proposed changes include addition of new definitions relating to land alteration. And two, revisions to activities subject to special permit, limits on earth removal and removal or alteration of exposed ledge face. PB six, amendments to Article four point three, accessory use regulations and Article two definitions. Update to towns by law to align with the state's Affordable Homes Act. Proposed changes include, one, amend Article two definition of accessory dwelling unit, units, also known as ADUs, to match the state's definition. Two, amend Article four point three, accessory use regulations to allow one ADU by right in accordance with the Affordable Homes Act up to nine hundred square feet. Two, ADUs, uh, sorry, three, ADUs over nine hundred square feet up to one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet will be by special permit through the zoning board of appeals. PB seven, amendments to Article five point three, implementation of floor area ratio in residential districts. Proposed changes include removal of max percent lot coverage by building column in the table of dimensional regulations for the residential districts to be replaced with a new column entitled maximum floor area ratio. Two, removal of footnote five in the table of dimensional regulations. Three, adding in subparagraph T under section three hundred dash four, five point four, to allow FAR to exceed the maximum specified by special permit. And then PB ten, amendment to Article five point three, table of dimensional regulations. Housekeeping change to reinsert previously removed provision. Proposed changes include, one, amending section three hundred dash five point two, D, subparagraph two. By inserting the underlined text that was inadvertently omitted by, from the revisions adopted at the November twenty twenty three special town meeting. The language is D setbacks, subparagraph two. The minimum required front yard setback for a building is measured from the front lot line and extends the full width of the lot between the side lot lines. Provided, however, where a street has a right of way width of less than forty feet. The setback distance shall include an additional twenty feet and be measured from the center line of the street. And further provided that any setback and or front side or rear yard shall conform to the yard definitions as set forth within Article two. The full text and maps, if applicable, of the proposed amendments are available for viewing at the town clerk's office, Cohasset Town Hall, forty one Highland Avenue. Cohasset, Mass, zero, two, zero, two, five, during regular business hours, Monday through Thursday, eight AM to four thirty PM, Friday, eight AM to twelve PM. Electronic copies of proposals can be found on the town of Cohasset website, Cohasset MA dot org slash planning board. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed amendment should attend the public hearing at the time designated. Signed, Thomas J. Callahan, Chair, Planning Board.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I didn't know that FAR was on tonight, so I thought that was next week, but okay. I think we should start with that. We don't have Carolyn here to guide us, but I suggested earlier today that we just do a motion. Since we're the sponsoring board, to just withdraw it on consideration for this warrant. Carolyn tells us next week we have to do a different procedure to take it off. We'll do that, but, so I'll start with a motion to remove. PB seven, the amendments to Article five point three, implementation of floor area ratio in residential district from consideration for this warrant.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmire, aye.
Deidre Hobson, aye. Sorry, Kevin.
I am here. I, I as well.
Okay, thanks. And Birgit, you can vote too.
Okay, aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll start with the first one. Uh, let's see. Who's gonna screen share? Cassandra, you or me?
Uh, if you could, that would be great.
All right, let me get, let me get my Word version up, because it can play with text. So while I'm doing this, um, I reported earlier to you all today that I met with the zoning board last night. They didn't have their full complement, but they approved four of the articles and they'll deal with the other three when they have their full board in November. So we might not have their full recommendations in the printed warrant, but uh, they made a number of comments as, as were made at the, at the public hearing, a, a public forum that we held a week ago on Monday, so we'll, we'll get to those when we get to the relevant articles, but. The first one, PB one, is the reform of the wind energy bylaw, and this is, as said before, is intended to simplify the language, shorten the actual bylaw, and move a lot of material, like application material and decommissioning material that's based on tech, technical specifications that may change over time, uh, to more easily amendable regulations and and once again, I tend to have the regulations all in place before town meeting for us to, to vote on and have them in place before town meeting votes, but. Um, relatively simple, not changing any of the substance of the bylaw. It is still only regulating uh, large wind turbines of over five hundred kilowatts an hour. Uh, as I mentioned before, in discussions with the Alternative Energy Committee, the idea of allowing for smaller size wind turbines. Um, they just didn't feel the technology and the feasibility was there quite yet to allow uh, you know, individual house or building scale type turbines. So the only things that are possibly permissible in the town are very large ones in certain areas with certain size requirements, uh, that generate over five hundred kilowatt hours, so. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. Let me get to the explanation of it. Where did I write that? Okay, so the box here is the explanation that goes usually found at the end of the warrant. And Cassandra, remind me that we ma- make sure I have one of these expla- explanation boxes for every one of these before we, when we do the final drafts of all of this. So there's really not much to discuss about this. I don't think. It's mostly housekeeping. Um, any questions, comments, suggested changes at this point?
Well, we're not looking at the language. Can't see the language if you were trying to bring it up, but um, uh, uh, my question is.
Oh, I didn't share the screen. I'm sorry.
Anywhere?
Uh, hold, hold on, hold on.
What, what districts are these allowed in?
Well, let me, let me share the screen first. Sorry. My, my bad. All right, there it is. So the box here is the explanation. Um, let me go up through it.
Cause I, I think at, at one point, we, we limited, we limited these to just the technology business district. In, in one iteration where we were going back and forth with the judge. And I haven't been able to find exactly what districts they're allowed in, or if there are any district other than a residential district.
Okay, no, hold on. I mean, here, here is the special permit language. Oops. Ah, geez, I just messed the format. That says there that's in non-residential districts. Um, let me, I'd have to quickly try to find it in Article four, so hold on one second. Is, the new Article four is not in the, um, it's not yet in the Cohasset E three sixty, I assume.
No, it is.
It is?
Yes.
Ah. So.
Also, I'm, I have it pulled up on my phone right now, and it says, um, under, in principal use regulations under renewable energy uses, it says, see Article nineteen. So.
Oh, is that what it says?
Yeah, so I don't know how helpful Article four is gonna be. I can look and see if it's on the table, but.
That's all right.
Yeah, if you. Yeah, cause the table says, no, 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 except for technology business district.
Right, so that means it would have, and the same with the so, the large solar arrays, it would have carried over to, to the new three A commercial district. But there's a, what, a one acre size requirement? I believe that's the minimum lot size and the setback requirements too.
So it, so you could put a wind turbine instead of just in the technology business district. You could put it at like anywhere on three A that has a commercial district.
Correct.
Correct. It would have been, so the um, districts that we combined was the technology business, the light industry, and the highway business. So it would be under the, any of those categories.
And then B.
Although, here's a question. When you merged those districts in the last article, you specified that they were gonna take on the uses of the highway business district.
Let me, let me.
And they are not allowed in the highway business district.
I have to find.
Well, I suppose it might be possible to create a, a wind turbine overlay district.
No.
What?
Not, nothing. I'm trying to think of where I can find what we did with the di- the districts last fall, last spring. I'm trying to find where I have that still. Make a complication.
You know, when the trustees of reservation applied for a, a wind turbine out in the corner of, uh, Cohasset that's surrounded by Hingham. It, it was located like a mile and a half from any house in Cohasset.
I know. Having a brain freeze, I'm sorry.
So I guess the point I was trying to make is, um, the distance from residences i- is a big deal. So that, that's really the only critical thing, and that there are still some places in Cohasset, like, um, the trustees of reservations property that is significantly far away from Cohasset, single family houses. Obviously, in that example, not so far away from Hingham, single family residences. But I think they filed a lawsuit to appeal our decision.
Tom, I have last town meetings and amendments available if you're looking for something specific.
That's what I'm looking for, yeah. What does it say?
Which, which one were you looking for? The consolidation on three A?
Yeah, the one on three A.
Um, to consolidate and rezone all land within the highway business district, technology business district, and light industry districts. Into the commercial three A district, um, adopting the uses and dimensions of the highway business district and the uh, special permit uses of medical marijuana facilities, wind turbine facilities, and ground mounted solar installations of the TD, uh, TB district.
I thought that's what we did. We did certain of the uses in the technology business district. Um, medical marijuana, because we kind of have to do it for the state and the wind and the solar. So the wind and the solar, large scale facilities under both these articles would be allowable in the three A's commercial district, but under special permit. And if they meet all the other requirements of lot size setbacks and all the other stuff, so that is a change. That's really the only substantive change to both articles is just done by the district and solve, caused by the district consolidation.
Well, I mean, before we, we didn't, uh, there, there was no, I think, limit, um, to these large wind turbines. People proposed them where they, in, in the, the most reasonable places, either maybe not on purpose, but, um, it just happened that way.
Well, they have to cite them so that they can actually, they, they, there's a technical location, and that's where they cite them. Or they don't get them, right?
Well, I mean, in terms of the impact on the neighborhoods, that's one issue. In terms of uh, whether they generate wind or not, is another issue. Um, or, or, or whether the, the payback, uh, gets doubled or something, because you can't put a wind turbine in a, in a valley necessarily unless uh, it's, it shows that the, the wind, uh, is channeled through the valley or something. But my experience from going through a couple of long hearings is, uh, wind turbines and houses don't mix.
Yeah, and here's, so parcel area has to be, none of this is changing from the existing bylaw. It has to be one acre. The height have a maximum of two hundred and sixty feet. The setbacks have to meet the setbacks of the district. And then three times the total height from the nearest residential structure, so that could be as much as seven hundred and eighty feet. That's a substantial setback.
It, it is, but not for a wind turbine with flicker and, and infrasound. Imperceptible, low frequency sound and, and the other issues that.
I don't think we have any properties that would meet all of this criteria, um, those parts of three A that have residences.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just, uh, I mean, sort of spitballing on it at this point. I just wanted to make sure where can you build them, and if it's all on all three A, that's not, not much different than, uh, what was originally set up where you build them wherever you want. Um, where they, where they, where you can. And, um, the, the site behind Hingham Lumber and, and the other one, uh, up at the trustees of reservations on Turkey Hill. Were the two sites that were hearings for.
Mm-hmm. And why were they defeated? Or were they defeated? Were they just withdrawn?
Uh, the two turbine option was defeated, I think. Uh, uh, as, I, I tried to make it just one turbine at the, at the very last minute instead of the two. Um, um. But, uh, that got defeated, and then the, the one in, in, at the trustees of reservation passed, just got appealed and, um. They dropped it. The trustees dropped it.
Oh, okay. Oh, those again will probably be the only feasible sites that this could happen. And I think there's something in here, when you have two turbines, that you have even more setback and distances and lot size you need. So, anyway. Anything else?
The, the direction the technology is going is a, a part, if you take the subsidies and all that off the table. From a technology standpoint, the larger the turbine, the more efficient it is and the more energy you produce. That's why these turbines are generally going offshore. And the ones that are now are actually dwarfed by the ones that are going offshore, um, in the not too distant future off of Europe, which is ahead of us with this technology. So it's offshore, it's big, which even the biggest ones that we're kind of familiar with and see nearshore. Or if you've gotten in a boat and have seen them offshore, are dwarfs compared to the size of the mega turbines that the technology is moving towards. Now, the caveat to that is, again, the subsidies aside, that doesn't mean or couldn't be smaller applications. And that make economical sense, sense with whatever subsidies are there.
Well, that, that's why the Alternative Energy Committee didn't want to encourage, you know, I wanted to encourage, the thought was to allow, you know, a turbine on my roof, by monitor, on a pole in my yard to generate electricity for my house, but they say that both the technology and the cost is not there to make that an efficient choice for anybody at this point in time. So right now, that would be pers- remain prohibited. Um.
You, you know, i- i- interesting, the, the, the power density, uh, for, uh, I looked into this for my boat. The power density for a, a small wind turbine compared to solar panels, it was, it was cheaper to, to generate more power with a, a little mini wind turbine than to buy solar panels at the time. Um, uh, and just to follow up on Kevin's, uh, uh, thing about offshore. The state did set aside, uh, some significant areas for offshore solar, uh, offshore wind in, um, I think it's going back a few years now. Um, and I don't know how they relate to our, uh, waters, the waters off of Cohasset.
Do we have members of the public here?
There is one person in the public.
Anybody from the public have any questions, comments about this? Raise your hand and we can promote you.
Nothing.
Is Amy's circle back AI notes associated with Amy Glassmire?
Uh, it is actually, um, uh, it's a piece of software that takes notes.
You're bringing AI into our meetings. Great.
I, I wasn't intending to do it because I'm just trying to learn how to use it, so I apologize.
I'd be interested how that works out for you, Amy.
You, you'd be amazed. It is an amazing tool. It, it basically captures all this information. It orders it, it pulls out the most important things, and if you say something like, all right, Clark has agreed to, it will actually take that, put it aside, and then send it to Clark.
No, God, the world is coming.
Oh, boy.
World is really.
You know, it sounds, it sounds really great. I mean, I, I know that Zoom can take, uh, notes. I mean, they can convert what has been said into text. But I don't think it, that's, that's, that has been done, or it's not widely used.
It's, um, they can. It's not super reliable with, uh, its accuracy.
All right. We'll discuss AI. I don't want it intruding in our meetings, but that's besides. Let's move this along. All right, if we're prepared to make a recommendation, um, I'll make the motion that we recommend adoption of PB one. Hello?
Second?
Again, sorry.
All in favor? We'll do this verbally, alphabetical.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmire, aye.
Kevin Heine, aye.
Deidre Hobson, aye.
Birgit, you can vote too.
Yeah, okay. Birgit Smith-Bisher, aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, let me see. The next one is PB two is the same concept with the solar bylaw. Moving, simplifying the language, shortening the bylaw, moving more easily and more readily amendable things to regulations, and again, the major change because of the consolidation of the districts is these would be allowed on anywhere in the three A commercial district. The changes we made last fall in Article four relating to solar was all more smaller individual scale that the AG's office wanted, but this is still this particular part bylaw is regulating the large scale facilities, which at the moment, we only have, um, the dump. So, any questions, comments on this one? Setbacks in this.
No comments.
Okay.
Nothing down.
Anything from the public? A gentleman or lady or gentleman from the public who's out there? Okay, and, uh, we'll proceed to, I'll make a motion that we recommend, uh, adoption of, or an Article PB two.
Second? Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Clark Brewer, I.
I'm Callahan, I.
Me Glassmore, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Deidre Hobbs, and I.
Briget Schmidt, I.
Thank you. Um, Cassandra, do we have to deal with them in the order they're here or can we go out of order? Oh, you moved them, that's good, right. Well, no, it's moved on my document, can we take them out of order?
I don't see why not, as long as you're at least touching on all of them.
Yeah, yeah, I wanted just, you know, and I said in the memo I circulated earlier today that, you know, we're trying to change the order up of the yes, it's seven that's going to be presented sort of in order of ease or order of least discussion to more discussion. So the next one is what's been designated as PB ten. This is the change uh to the table of dimensional regulations to return a note that had been inadvertently taken out when we drafted the changes to Article five's table last fall. I don't recall that we discussed this one way or the other, it was truly inadvertent, I'm sure Judge Cutler looked at it and said, what does this apply to? At both the public forum we had and at the ZBA meeting last night, Woody very clearly uh describes what this is all about and um I've got a that town meeting probably call on him to explain it if it needs to be, but basically this is to deal with uh you know, front setbacks in the rare circumstance where we have a road that has a right of way of less than forty feet. Uh, the standard roadway design these days is to have a forty foot right of way. Not pavement, right of way is different than pavement, the pavement can be, you know, commonly it's twenty of the forty. Sometimes it's set right in the middle of the forty foot right of way, sometimes it's offset. Sometimes it's twenty four feet, sixteen feet. You know, a clear example of the one rare occasion where we don't have a forty foot right away is the old part of Black Horse Lane. Um, so in those rare circumstances, this is telling them how to deal with the front setback. Uh, the zoning board thought this was handy to still have, even though it won't apply to very many roads in town, so. Uh, it's a not controversial no brainer to accommodate the uh zoning board's wishes, so. Any questions or comments?
Um, I just had a couple of comments, um, it it my recollection it is that the judge took it out because she'd never seen it before and and thought it was uh odd and I think everybody shrugged at the time. And
It is.
But if Woody Woody thinks it's useful, I'm I'm all for it, though, what I'd like to suggest is that that it could be um amended by special permit, because right now it's it's absolute and as you know, the the lots and and ways are are getting that can be um made useful or getting more more and more sort of marginal and geometrically challenged. So I'd say, yeah, let's do it, but let's have a special permit to uh allow um a relief.
For what?
Additional twenty feet.
So wait a minute, Clark, could you say that over again?
Okay, I I I I said that um uh, the judge got rid of it because she thought it was um fairly meaningless and she she'd never seen it before, didn't like it and and the the zoning bylaw committee, I think shrugged and said, okay. Woody says he likes it, he thinks it's useful. And uh I I don't have a problem with that either. It's it's just that if uh with lots and and houses that are more geometrically challenged uh on into the future, I I suggested that this additional twenty feet um that relief be subject to a special permit. Because if it's not subject to a special permit by the ZBA, um then it would require a variance and in some cases geom- geo- geometry uh uh is is necessarily problematic. I mean, I think Woody gave the example, hey, you know, if it's a new house, I tell people about this that don't know anything about it and and they just move their house ten or fifteen feet back, no big deal. But uh in some cases, it might be a big deal. And then um if they wanted relief, they would have to a- ask for a variance. So that's why I'm suggesting that that the ZBA administer a special permit to uh relief for this additional twenty feet.
So where would this go in in the document?
I
Can you?
I think it just add, you would just add another sentence at the end.
Have you discussed this with Woody? This was like a no brainer thing and we've discussed it, you know, for the last few weeks since they brought it up.
Well, I I don't see what the big deal is, I I don't know, I think I did discuss it with Woody, but I I'm I'm not a hundred percent sure. I mean, I remember talking to him about it and talking to him uh in relation to uh the ADUs and some other things. But um but I I can't remember what to what depth. My suggestion of of the the additional twenty feet be um that relief be allowed under a special permit.
As I understand this, this is the intent of this is on the rare street that doesn't have the forty foot right of way.
Well, there's a lot of them, Tom.
Fine, but that the intent is to not have houses built on top of the street. And so to have a setback that would be corresponding to what the setback would be with a forty foot right of way road.
Yeah, well, I understand the concept, so um so and and that might make sense, um that might make sense, it's just that neighborhoods are configured so randomly in Cohasset. Except for yours, Tom, I know you're you've got a a a straight street with a cul-de-sac on the end. But but there are so many other neighborhoods that are all uh geometrically challenging. Um, and and anyway, uh this is my suggestion for this.
I know, but I did, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud that we are here tonight to make the recommendation on text. And it's being proposed by another board. And I don't see as much as I asked some of them to be here tonight, I don't see that any of them are here tonight. Which is not helpful, but.
Well, well, we don't have to make a decision right now, why don't um uh I'll uh connect with Woody in the morning. And uh then we can amend it for our next.
Significant enough change and and I I I personally don't agree with it, I I mean, I I I don't know why we feel the compelling.
I did a bunch of diagrams of this condition with different types of scenarios and it doesn't really, it doesn't really help a neighborhood uh that much, I mean, if it's house, house, house facing each other, it there's really no no great um.
Yeah, but that's theoretical, is there actual examples of empty lots on these kinds of roads in Cohasset that might be adversely affected by this? And I I'll bet you the answer is zero.
I I I beg to differ.
All right, well, listen, I
The way I recall.
To indulge you, I will, let's continue this to the sixteenth. And I encourage you to come up with real world examples and I encourage you to speak to Woody about it. And I mean, I'm just on process, this is kind of eleventh hour and the first time I've heard any suggestion that this is more than.
Well, not really, I mean, it just came up in the forum the uh week ago, so, I mean, hey.
Well, I I didn't think amending the table came up on the forwarding for in the forum, Clark, I do recall, I thought Woody said that if there was an off chance something needed to be addressed, it could be done through uh, like you mentioned, a variance and approval of the zoning of the ZBA.
But but the variance uh has to be uh uh have a a hardship and and ZBA, as Thomas said a lot, um is is loathe to grant them, that's why I'm suggesting if we put this back in that providing relief from it for good reasons and and the standard is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, that 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 can be met, um but and 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 allow some flexibility for um you know, properties that were were just um we're imagining it would apply to.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we take what Tom offered, which is that we will deal with this on the sixteenth, you will talk to Woody, you will come back with a clear explanation.
He wanted to see some examples, which I think is fair.
Yeah, okay, so you so you sort of have three tasks, right? We're gonna go to the sixteenth. You are going to talk.
I got it.
And you're going to provide examples.
Yep, okay. Motion to continue for this, do we?
Just carry it over to the sixteenth, let's let's move on. Make sure, make sure you talk to him about it, all right?
You I might actually need an official motion to continue it, just.
All right, make the motion that we continued further deliberation on uh on Article PB ten to October sixteen. All in favor?
Clark Brewer, I.
Callahan, I.
Me Glassmore, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Deidre Hobbs, and I.
Oh, and that's me, right?
That's that's what neat would, in your scenario, that's what would be added.
Right, uh, by the way, I don't have any uh any um questions or comments on the the floodplain overlay district? If that makes you feel good.
All right, next, uh, all right, let me just, uh, let me just I'll quickly just shoot this in an email to you, so um there's my emails. All right, um, so the next is the consideration of what's designated now is PB three reform of the floodplain overlay district. If you recall, we got the grant to have MAPC uh handle this for us, uh the state has come out with a new model bylaw and um we are required to comply with that new model bylaw. Our existing bylaw is actually pretty close and in good shape, so there's very few um edits to this substance. Um, and it's all set out in the text, what's underlined and what's is the new material, what's crossed out is there. I'm too, I'm sorry that I'm multitasking.
Is there any reason not to make a motion to?
Yeah, no, is there any, is any discussion, any, we've discussed this before, is there any further discussion or comments that need to be made about this one? If not, uh, we'll go to a motion, um, I'll move that the planning board recommend passage of PB three.
Second.
Clark, I sent you the text of the previous one with the highlight.
Okay, great.
Through my Gmail account, not the town account.
I'm just gonna say Clark Brewer, I.
Yeah, Tom Callahan, I.
Me Glassmore, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Deidre Hobbs, and I.
All right, next is uh along by law, I wish we could have shortened that one. Next is the ADU one, and we discussed this again before, this is to conform to the new state law, which is allowing ADUs of up to nine hundred square feet, which is was the limit and is the limit in our existing bylaw now as of right. And to again accommodate a request from Woody and or the whole zoning board, we are adding a provision for slightly larger ADUs. Uh, not to exceed twelve hundred and fifty square feet, but these would remain by special permit. So public forum, we didn't hear any real opposition to this nor at the zoning board last night, however, as I said in the memo I circulated. Our current ADU bylaw had a two two caps on ADUs. And one of them was that there could be no more than ten special permits given for them in a year. And then the second one was that once ten percent of the total housing stock, which would be approximately three hundred and twenty um ADUs were permitted, the law would be sunsetted and the intent of both of those was not to let ADUs get out of control. Um, Woody has been a strong advocate of eliminating both of these caps. And of course, with the state now making smaller ADUs as of right, it throws the idea of a cap totally out the window. And in Carolyn's amendments that she's drafted here, there is no cap applied to the as of rate units.
So this would only be a special permit?
Yeah, the cap.
Would have a ten unit cap?
Yeah, the cap remains here for the ones that would be allowable by special permit.
Well, then it's irrelevant, right?
Yeah, I mean, so I I I said to Woody last night, I said, well, remember that a year ago, when we first made the change to allow ADUs in outbuildings or accessory building, we said let's keep the cap until we see how the new bylaw works. Well, there's been no applications under the new bylaw in the last year. Or or since the spring when the AG approved it. And again, I argued on one hand, let's keep this in until we see what happens. And you know, we had a lot of discussion that, you know, Woody estimates that there may be as many as fifty, sixty quote unquote, illegal ADUs in existence in the town. And hoping the new bylaw would encourage them to make them legal. Now, I offered the thought that probably most of them are under nine hundred square feet and are as of right units and people will either permit them or they won't permit them. Um, but you know, the cap of ten a year is one thing, the cap of ten percent overall is if we're at fifty, sixty now, are we ever going to get to three hundred twenty, three hundred and thirty of these existing throughout the town? I don't know, and do we care at this point? I don't know, it's, I mean, I'm okay with removing this.
I think.
But but it also, at the same time, I also argued, Woody, please, you know, we made an agreement last year that we were gonna wait and see see how the new bylaw works before we remove the caps. Let's just do this, however, you can see that because of the new as of right provisions from the state, it kind of blow, it certainly blows out the idea of caps for the smaller units. And this is really would only apply to those that we would apply a special permit process to, so I don't know if it makes sense anymore in light of the state law. It's a simple change, it's eliminating this sub sub paragraph L. I I I, again, we either keep.
Tom, Amy was gonna make a comment.
Yeah, go ahead, so.
I I just was going to say that rather than using the approach of regulation first, I think in light of the objective of the state, which is to increase the availability of uh domiciles, that we allow it to function uh as is without constraints on it, because as you said, it the state has already basically uh allowed the the process to unfold without restrictions. I think we should not be so cautious because we 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 want to participate in the process of providing more housing.
Right, right, and and for twenty years, we've had a dysfunctional A- ADU. And 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 this was kind of a big part of it, which is just it it, this condition was completely irrelevant when they created it twenty years ago, they just did it to make everyone feel good.
It was done to make sure that these didn't get out of control because we were still in the mentality and the mindset that this is a single family community. And we wanted to stay that way, we our bylaw was specifically designed not to have multiple dwellings on a single lot. As most suburban communities did, but you know, it's twenty years later and the state is changing the game, the ground rules, and I think everybody's thinking has evolved as well, so. Uh, I have no problem taking it out, I don't, you know, so.
Hey, so would you, uh, like to make a motion to?
The motion would be to recommend passage of, uh, what is the article number? PB six, the amendment to the ADU bylaw, but with taking out subsection one point one L, which is the caps.
Right.
Before, before anyone votes on that or seconds it, I did have a comment on this, uh, that I, I, I think, um, you know, this probably falls into the category of trying too hard uh, with, with an ADU law that, that is, um, that will take a lot of local, a local control, uh, away. Uh, uh, on the other hand, it, if the special permit process by the ZBA is, is to look at what might be substantially more detrimental or not, um, for larger than nine hundred square foot units. Um, I, I was gonna suggest that, that any of these conditions be, be subject to, uh, a special permit, that, that whatever regulation we come up with for our ADU, that relief from any of these regulations, whether it's nine hundred square feet or, or whatever, be, uh, subject to the special permit process, not just the square footage, and, 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 um, and I would say that the reason being is that ZBA has had this in their purview for, for decades and hasn't seen a lot of them. And, and to the extent that there's some component that we've put into our local regulation that may be a further obstacle to, uh, reasonable, um, ADU generation. Uh, I think the ZBA is more than qualified to make the determination of what might be substantially more detrimental or not.
What, what are you specifically talking about?
If I'm a, if I'm a develop, if I'm a house owner and I'm thinking to having grandma come stay with me for a few years, I'm probably gonna build a guest house, or if my house predates nineteen fifty-five, I'm just gonna turn it into a two-family because those are as of right, no special permit.
Okay.
And, in fact, the guest house and the additional dwelling unit have no size limitations.
But a guest house is not an ADU.
That's right. But it's kinda, it's kinda the same thing.
Somebody living there for years.
It's kind of the same thing.
No, it isn't.
Well, it is, it's, it's kind of the same thing as what I'm saying, if you're saying it's not the same thing, well, you're right. Uh, I'm taking a case for additional flexibility in, in the creation of this bylaw.
In what respect? We have flexible, the state is saying they're as of right up to nine hundred feet, okay, we can't change that, that's state law now. Okay, we're giving you the ability to go slightly larger with the special permit, period. These things are not intended to be equal in size to the existing house, that's not what an ADU is. It is a smaller accessory dwelling unit, not a equally sized second home.
Well, I didn't suggest that, but, but thanks for making that point, I think that's useful.
Yeah, I, uh, on, on this one, I'm not, I don't think we should be entertaining an eleventh hour change of that nature without knowing what the specifics it's trying to address. And without understanding fully the consequences of this, we've been at this for weeks, months, and, and this is when it's coming up? Uh, uh, I'm sorry, I don't think that's fair to the rest of us.
So I want to return to my point from, uh, which is that we, Clark agreed, what, excuse me, I'm, I'm a little bit confused between the last one and this one, but my recommendation would be to leave it as is. We can change it if it becomes, um, a problem, and let's move on.
Okay.
I have one quick question before we move on. Um, just, there, there's, um, the assumption that there are, uh, units like this that have not been made you known to the town, is it now that, now that they are legal, um, um, expected that these people step forward and, and get a legal, um, permit for their ADUs?
I, I'd imagine that, that, that many would, and, and some might continue to call their ADUs guest houses.
Well, I, I think that one of the, the issues we have to contend with that we haven't thought about is, I know somebody that has an auxiliary unit, and they didn't get on the rolls because of taxes. The assessed value of the property is gonna go up with something new on it, well.
Well, the, the assessor's really good at, at snooping what, what people have done, no, no disrespect to the assessor, I mean, it's their job to find out who built what, when, and how does that affect value? Um, so there's no way anybody who, who builds something or has some kind of a unit would be able to hide it for very long.
Yeah, but we don't enforce that, and I said that to the ZBA last night, that the issue of getting these illegal units online is not a question of the how we write the bylaw, it's a question of enforcement. Of going around and, you know, saying, okay, we'll give you a two-year moratorium to make your unit legal. You know, now we have a new state law that's actually encouraging it. And, uh, otherwise, we set some kind of penalty. That's the only way we're gonna get these old, these illegal ones legal, is, is to, you know, we're gonna have to use a hammer. Uh, the bylaw language isn't gonna make a difference one way or the other, this, this, this bylaw is not gonna all of a sudden say to people, oh, I'm gonna go get a permit. Especially the ones who are now as of right, they're not gonna bother. But, anyway, I had to step away from it. Is there, is there anything else that you resolved that you'd wanna put in the motion?
What, one other, uh, point, uh, relative to existing ADUs is if they've been there for ten years and, and no permits were filed, then under state law, then you can, you can keep it.
I'm not sure that's true, but, okay.
Well, it is true, but, uh, I'll send the language to the whole board tomorrow.
Yeah, alright.
It's a mass general law.
Anyway, alright.
That sets the statute of limitations for removal of non-conforming, um,
Oh, okay.
Or unpermitted, uh, structures.
Yeah, not, uh, not, not a law specific to, okay.
No, not specific to.
No, no, that's alright, I understand that, alright.
But relative to existing ADUs in town.
The discussion, and I'm, I'm, again, I, sorry, I had to step away the downside of dog ownership, but, uh,
So there was a motion and, and, and I think he just wanted a second, Tom.
Yeah, the motion was to recommend passage of PB six with the elimination of the caps in what would become new section one point one L of the bylaw.
Second.
Okay. Anything further? Anybody from the public again out there? I don't know, we, we still have somebody out there, Cassandra, I can't see.
You do.
Okay, um, if I see no comments, then, um, all in favor?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Last, my, aye.
Kevin High, aye.
Jeter Hobbs, and aye.
Bigotin, big shot, aye.
When you talk to Woody tomorrow, Clark, you can tell him about this one, it'll make him very happy.
Uh, yeah, that's always good, kid, making Woody happy's good. There's nothing wrong with that.
Alright, so we're not dealing with, is that, how many did we deal with tonight? Six?
Uh, Five? Yes, yes, six.
Alright, so, but we're dealing with, um, mitigation next week and land alteration next week.
Nope, land alteration is on tonight's.
Oh, it's tonight, okay, so then.
The only thing next week is the mitigation, and, well, now you've continued, um, the.
Okay.
Version, but.
Alright, so, um, on, there's still highlights from old language, but, so next we're gonna consider PB before, which is the reform of the land alteration bylaw. And again, in summary, we are simplifying the language and the flow of the bylaw, I, I think, improving the flow of topic to topic, uh, taking out confusing references to assessor zoning classifications or use classifications. When I was going through this last night, down here in section D, which is the clearing thresholds, which as I explained to the zoning board, the thresholds themselves that we used to have, that we have are not changing, what is changing in the clearing is we are eliminating the exemption of a small lot. And, but I noticed this reference here to, um, subsection six. I would take that out because it's, um, it's, it's referencing something that development of significant impact, that's not what Article eleven's gonna be called, it, it's an old, it's from an older draft, that it, it's just not relevant in the terminology that it's being used, so I would take that out. The comments from the public forum and the zoning board, which a lot of times coincided with the same individuals, by the way, but, um, really, um, well, I guess the, the major focus that remains, as I said in my memo of, of change was, you know, back in our definition of exposed ledge face, this, this part right here, of trying to regulate, um, uh, subsurface ledge for a distance, um. And a question was asked, well, what if, you know, you have a piece of exposed ledge, but once it heads underground, it drops off substantially, you know, I mean, I think we're all assuming that the ledge, once it goes underground, it's somewhat level, you know, it's only like a half foot or a foot underground and gradually, but, you know, the what ifs, the theoreticals, somebody said, what if it really does suddenly drop off, and what's exposed is like a peak of a mountain of ledge or something, and it literally drops off, what are we trying to protect and regulate there, so? I, I too find this fifteen foot thing a little problematic. I, you know, I think as we try, you know, this is a unique bylaw to Cohasset because we have ledge as an important physical characteristic that makes our town look the way it does and makes our town somewhat unique, but you know, I, we know there's concerns about blasting, and we have examples going on right now of how the land can be stripped to do, you know, to remove subsurface ledge, but, um, we, we have to be very careful about overstepping where we get into making it impossible to develop a lot. And we, we all know that the lots that remain, or a lot of them are very marginal and have a lot of ledge because that's why they weren't developed up to this point. You know, if we, if we overregulate and prevent any kind of development, then you get into a regulatory taking. And Massachusetts is a lot more liberal, I guess is the word, on what is a regulatory taking compared to federal law, but nevertheless, you still can have a regulatory taking if you prevent all, all beneficial use of the property, so. I, I just, I just don't want us to overstep with this, and I don't think the intent of this bylaw on its original conception twenty years ago, uh, through the amendments that were done in two thousand eighteen, was to, to go beyond the surf, the exposed ledge, which is what, the visual characteristic that we're trying to protect, so. I'm suggesting we take this phrase out, and if there's other references to subsurface ledge that's need to be removed, we should do that as well.
Kevin raised his hand.
Yeah, go ahead, you, I, Kevin, you and Brigete were hot to trot on keeping this, so I wanna hear the justification for that, you know, because we, we will have to sell that to town meeting, so I, I.
I haven't heard an alternative to fifteen other than people saying it shouldn't apply, so it's basically fifteen or zero, okay? The reason there's a buffer proposed here is because of what you just spoke to about the increasing use of explosives to clear lots for development in this town, okay? If someone doesn't like fifteen, okay, then there needs to be some hook onto this tied into the use of explosives to create a site developable. And if we can provide some wording that says, okay, if you have ledge that goes straight down, it ends at the edge with, that where, where it's daylighted, okay? And then that also means that you're gonna, not gonna need any, um, explosive use to develop that property. If you are proposing as a part of your development to get permitting through the mechanisms that exist for use of explosives to clear subsurface ledge at your site and make it developable, you can't do so at a distance greater than within fifteen feet of exposed ledge on the site. So, I propose, and I'm just putting it out there, and the wording can be tweaked to accommodate this, if someone wants to put explosives to use on a property to develop it, they can't apply those explosives within fifteen feet of exposed ledge. If they don't need to do explosives on the site to clear it and make it developable for what they're proposing, then they can go to that edge that you're saying, uh, should exist at the existing boundary for what's daylighted for the rock. I'm open to what other people might think and feel on this, we've got enough examples in this town, in my own neighborhood, other neighborhoods, over by Cunningham Bridge, where basically, almost from lot line to lot line, properties have been exposed with ledge, the property that you bring up and you brought up at the last public meeting was on Beach Street, where the guy basically had to build his own, um, ramp to get up to the top of his house, and it creates a, a chasm, you know, when you're driving up that driveway to get to that house, alright? And that person has ledge all over that lot, but had to create a specific grade to get to develop the top of it, which he had to hollow out to put, get a flat surface to put in the structures, okay? Then there's also the Cunningham Bridge, where we've seen the extensive use of explosives there, and there's a rock wall that's exposed, and we're gonna tuck a home right into it. So, I, I think if we tie the two together by the use of explosives or not, I think that might be a way forward that could, um, be, um, accommodated to people, um, points raised about, yeah, some ledge may end at a point and go straight down, or it may traverse laterally under, just under the surface at a site some distance away from where it's daylighted. That's all I have.
Okay, I, I hear what you're saying, and that's interesting. I think we're gonna need to postpone this to next week just to ask, because Carolyn's not here, just to ask her opinion if within the zoning bylaw we could put a restriction tied to this extent of blasting, because blasting is pretty much, well, it's regulated by the fire department, and whether they, whether we can go delve into that, I guess, is, is the question.
Clark's hand is up as well.
Yeah, no, I'm seeing, I'm seeing, so go ahead, Clark, but that's, that's the issue, I, I think we need a legal opinion on that before we do that.
Well, just to follow up on that, um, I, 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 the planning board in the past has always articulated a preference for blasting for, um, adjacent property owners' benefit compared to, um, uh, the chipping, now, I'm, I'm familiar with both, the, the, the people have done both it, it around me, and and the project out on North May Street, they've chipped for months, I mean, my feelings are, are, will never be the same, they, they've all shifted. But, you know, a lot of old houses are built on stones, and the stones originally had mortar, and now the mortar's filled in with dirt. And, and so, um, blasting can have a significant impact on these fragile foundations. Um, so I don't, I don't know if there's a clear uh, w- way to remove the ledge one way or the other, but the bylaw basically wants to be a prohibition to removing exposed ledge, but I don't think it quite gets there. I, I reread the exceptions from the, uh, original language that we passed, and sure enough, I mean, it, it pretty much means you, you, whatever you wanna do, it, nothing applies.
Right.
But I'm not quite sure, that, I'm not quite sure that what you've done changes things, because, uh, look, if you, if you wanna build a detached garage, you come in for a special permit. Okay, if you have to modify the ledge, fine, it's not a prohibition.
I emphasized that to the zoning board, that it is not a prohibition, it is a, it is a, it is a scrutiny, it is.
Yeah, and, and that's, and that's fine, but it seems to me that as a part of the regulation, there should be a philosophical and a. There should be a philosophical and a goal component. To this so that people understand why, and I think also on the floor of town meeting, why this is important. And, 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 and I, 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 I went along with the any ledge that you can see. Um, I, I kind of think we should bend over backwards to try to. Preserve exposed ledge and ex, uh, and, and, uh, significant ledge. And, and that might mean, uh, and I've suggested in the past that, that perhaps that. Some kind of zoning relief could be, uh, given in certain si- situations. To make that happen. Oh, you've got some ledge and it's right in the middle of your lot. And if you, if you built on the left side, you could maintain it. But you, you need ten feet of setback relief. Well, I, I don't know how that would work exactly, but. Um, it, it, it seems like if the overall goal is to preserve significant ledge. We should define it and beyond just anything you can see. But I, I've, I've made comments off, offline and not as a part of the, this meeting. Well, I've got exposed ledge. I've got. Six foot high, two hundred square foot. Um, a ledge outcroppings that my house emerges from. They're right between my house and my driveway. I would consider those significant and I designed with them in, in mind. I designed the, 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 the front porch. With this ledge in mind to keep it exactly the way it was. But I've also got ledge that's a half inch high, that's. Sloped part of my yard and, and I don't think it necessarily, um, the preservation of below grade ledges. Is, is what we want to do here.
I don't think so either and the, the. You know, they did, the, the history of this bylaw from when it was first thought about in the mid two thousands until then the citizen petition in seventeen. And then the, what we have now in eighteen was. To, you know, a lot of compromises. And a lot of the compromises to get, you know, remember two thousand seventeen, the citizens petition got a majority. It failed by six votes to get two thirds. And a lot of the opposition and the, the difference in those six votes was. People thinking this is going to be overly restrictive on them to do anything on their property. And so, you know. Couple of us came up, you know, with these exemptions and for two thousand eighteen and it passed. And Clark's right there. The exemptions make it almost meaningless. And in the five years since, six years since that passed. We've seen one application for a special permit.
But, but the point is, it, you know, if you want to try and work on preserving ledge, that there may be some other ways of doing it besides this. And, and I, I don't think any of the tightening, increasing changes. That are proposed here really makes a big difference to me personally, that it's a special permit if you want to modify your exposed ledge.
Yeah, that's, and, and I mean, it was always a special permit, but it just, we, the exemptions made it almost meaningless.
But it's not a prohibition. It's a. And, and, um, and at the end of the day, I mean, is it? It, 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 how, how effective are these changes going to be at, at, at the ultimate goal? And, and again, I think that there should be some language about the ultimate goal. And maybe parameters to what the exposed ledge is. I, I made an example of my house. I've got six feet high, two hundred, two hundred square feet. Of ledge in the front of my house and I like it. I designed with it. But that's not what we see out here. We see, we see people, may, we see people just getting it out of the way so they can build conventional.
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree, but. I'm trying to, I'd have to look it up. It's probably still in the computer somewhere of what the citizens petition was. And, and I think we might have changed the earth removal bylaw a lot sooner, but the citizens petition was to toughen it up. Because of what happened on Beach Street and what happened on Nichols Road with that lot that was clear cut, cleared.
You're, you're talking about way back, not.
No, no, I know, I know. And, and. I, I, I'm trying to think if the language was more prohibitive and that's why we failed to just barely not get the two thirds vote. And then, so we came up with compromises and I remember with the author of the rewrite. Complaining that we were giving up too much in compromises, but the objective was to get something passed and we did. But it, it, it hasn't proven to be a useful tool in all these years. I, I, but I.
Well, again, I think the philosophy and the, and the overall goal is missing. And, and I question any exposed ledge as, as, as a, as a threshold.
We have a purpose and intent section that's always been there. And I, I, again. The, the. The, the objective maybe is prohibitive, but it has to be tempered by the fact that if we go too far with it. And we, we've engaged in a regulatory taking. And so some compromise has to be made. And we discussed that at length at the zoning board last night because. With, with this and some of the things they commented about, about the mitigation by law, you know. There's a fear that some neighbors think they're going to be empowered now to stop projects and.
Well, that's going to happen. That, that's.
I know, but that's, but that's not the intent and can't be the intent because that's not what zoning in Massachusetts is all about. It's not.
You can't stop that, but if it gives people a reason to appeal, they appeal if they feel like it and they got plenty of money.
So, I mean, in a perfect world, would I love to see prohibitive language? Sure, but I don't think it's legally. Tenable for us to do so. And I think if we are putting.
I know that. I'm saying you, you don't have a prohibition here.
Right.
You're, you said, you're saying you'd like a prohibition. It's just a special permit, even if you pull in more stuff for, for special permit review, the detached garage. The poolhouse, the swimming pool, whatever.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's to give at least the, the amendments are in, uh, designed to. Increase the scrutiny that is given to a given project. By taking away the exemptions for all the accessory stuff. You still get to build your main house, which we certainly couldn't prohibit.
If the garage happens to be attached, then, then it becomes a part of the primary structure.
It's a garage under, it's, 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 you know, or something like that, fine. But, you know, the one project we had at the Actors Row, you know, we had a separate carriage house slash three more car garage. We had a pool. I think that we, I think it was tennis courts that are already there, but, uh, you know. We had a lot of things that. Would have, I mean, we gave that one a lot of scrutiny and we came up with the ledge replication kind of concept, you know, where they covered some ledge up and exposed ledge somewhere else, but.
Well, well, again, I, I just.
We want, and I don't think, you know, the Cunningham Bridge is the poster child to this at the moment because all that went under was large home review.
Look, I, I'm not against this. I, 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 I just want you, you don't have to convince me. I just think, I just think this, maybe this needs to be tightened up with a, with a better philosophy. And, and, you know, for example, under section two, it says earth removal in excess of the limits set forth below. And then the next line, it says. Exposed ledge facing the, the, the limits set forth below. And then the line before, in excess of the limits set forth below. And then. I can't find the limits. I mean, I'm looking as an architect, I'm looking at like. Five hundred, five feet and, and, and two hundred square feet or, or what are we, what are the limits here?
The clearing limits are clearly set out and always have been.
Well, but no, it says exposed ledge in excess of the limit set forth below. And I, I looked below and I don't find. Yeah, go ahead.
Let me look. Okay, where are you re- reading this?
Well, it was, uh, I guess. Uh, section C, the end of section C. In excess of the limits set forth below. And I'm like, where are the limits? Grade change limits, those are limits.
So I don't think this is going to get resolved tonight. I, I, no, I, I just want to ask, if I leave, I may, I have to, I have to vacate where I'm taking this meeting now. If I leave and can't reconnect, are you still going to have a quorum?
Yeah, but we, we might put this one off to next week if.
Okay, I, I, I'm just saying I may. You may lose me momentarily, but I may not be able to dial back.
In the flow of the bylaw, C sets out just. Bullet points for things, what is subject to this bylaw and this requirement of special permit, the clearing in excess of the threshold set forth below. Those are in D.
Yeah, number three.
Right, number three is the earth removal one set forth below. So let's go with grade change.
ledge, exposed ledge is set.
The limits, the, the limits on the ledge is an, an earth removal. Is not stated in a quantity. Um, a, a, an old draft I did a long, long time ago had a limit on. You know, how much ledge face you are moving so that minor chipping could actually occur without needing a permit, but we took that out. So all chipping needs a permit, but it's, it, the, the. It's all, the, the limit is it's all activities that are going to have earth removal or, or alteration of exposed ledge face. Unless the removal is an exempt operation. So the removal that's required for a house. And the utilities is exempt, not subject to scrutiny, but all else. Regardless of quantity is subject to the scrutiny. And then. In the course of the special permit, we have to determine if it is substantially more detrimental or not. So if it is a minor league chipping and you're. You're talking about five cubic yards that you, you know, you're not going to jam somebody up with a lot of conditions, but if it's. If it's like the Cunningham Bridge property and you're leveling the entire surface of, of, of exposed ledge. Yeah, then you're going to get scrutiny, then you're going to get conditions. You may even get a prohibition as part of the special permit because you found it substantially more detrimental. You have to make findings. And this is the same, we, we talked about this and about the mitigation by law and we get to that next week. Too, because it's going to be discretionary and, you know, conditions may be imposed, mitigation may be required. It's not mandatory, but it's giving us the opportunity to do so. This, that's where the threshold is, is it's anything.
Oh, okay, but what I'm. Set forth below and there's no, nothing that quantifies the limits.
No, it's not, it's not.
It's a condition instead of, instead of an area or height.
Yeah, alright.
But it does say, Clark, you know, and kind of you can take out anything. And I do remember the words foundation and basement. So you, you can take out as, you know, and kind of you can, um, do away with as much, you know, ledge. As you need, and that is quantity wise, you know, and kind of to take out for you. Creating your foundation and, and your basement. And that's it. And not because you like to have, you know, and kind of, and, and, and additional, you know, kind of room between houses and, and so on.
I don't, uh, but I don't see, um, contractors, owners, developers, whatever you want to call it, taking out any more ledge than would be. Would be reasonable. I'm, I mean, it's expensive to remove it, so.
Yes, but, yeah, but Cunningham Bridge again, right? Yeah, and kind of they took out a lot, uh, simply to build the, um, um. To get into the house, right? You know, kind of with their little, um, breeze construction. And then a huge driveway construction. And this is. You know, kind of all going, this would most likely for me at least, you know, be something where we would say, okay, that's, that's too much and I would not, you know, and kind of. Ground a special permit for that. But, you know, you can build your house itself, you know, and kind of with the foundation and the basement. And then most of the ledge that they are taking off, you know, I kind of would probably be, you know, and kind of still there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand how it works. It's, it's just, um, uh, I, 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 it seems like it would be practical to have. Something that gives people more direction on what the, what the overall goal is. The overall goal is to preserve any ledge below ground, above ground. Of, of nominal height or no height. Um, as compared with pres- preservation of ledge above grade. I mean, like, for example, if, if you want to site your house. And you want to get rid of the ledge, you got a big ledge outcropping, you got to put your house where the ledge outcropping is. It's, I'm just saying that the regulation. Kind of drives, uh, design decisions. And I would prefer if. If people were encouraged to preserve the let, the, the significant ledge outcroppings and not be driven to remove them. Um, because they can. And because the bylaw language sort of drives that. Choice.
First of all, I'm making two changes here and C that will point you directly to where the thresholds are, changing the language. But here's what I would suggest is that. Perhaps the purpose and intent needs to be upgraded to express more directly. A preference towards non-alteration and, you know, non-chipping, non-removal. And what, this is what I'll suggest is that we continue this one to next week and. Mark and whoever else, Kevin, I see your hand up in a moment. Take a crack at this. Take a crack at rewriting. A, the purpose.
His low light looks like, uh, he's in a.
Alright, Kevin, go ahead, go ahead quickly. Go ahead quickly, Kevin, I know.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just going to add, you know, Clark said it, you know, there's, there's, the ledge is what makes this town unique. And the ledge and the use of it on lots is what makes a lot preserve its uniqueness and. You know, the beauty of a neighborhood and it adds to the beauty of a town. So there's parts of this town that we can provide as, um, examples to how. You know, we wouldn't want the ledge to be leveled or lowered or flattened to, 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 to create, um, a, a buildable. Space. We would want accommodation of what's there so that it works in harmony with whatever the structure is and the intent to put a structure on a lot. Um, so I'm not going to go off on that, but I think that should be woven into this, um, as part of the intent. I think that might, might, might be helpful.
Yeah, alright, so I, I'll send this along. Um, or Cassandra, if you could just take this nine point one as I've highlighted it and send this along. So. We're going to ask town council about. The subsurface being put into the definition of what's protected. In tying it into blasting somehow. And then. I'm gonna, you know, there was the one change I took out with the language from an older draft. I would suggest adding these two things to just have clearer reference to where the. Criteria and the thresholds are, but.
Clark's point about the chipping as an option too, um, you know, we may want to consider that. Blasting and. What it comes down to, I, and Clark knows this is, it's an economic decision. You spend enough time with the chipper. We're trying to work the denim granite that we have in this town and it doesn't chip readily unless you got fractures. And if you don't have fractures, it's so competent, the only way you can get to it is by blasting. Then you do your economic calculations as, as a developer of a property, decide it isn't worth paying a guy to chip and tie up the equipment for however long it might take. And it may not even be successful or just get, bring the blasting guys in at a higher price point and blow the stuff out of the ground. So that's an economic decision. We may not just want to limit it to blasting. It may be blasting and or, um, physical removal by way of chipping or other percussion methods.
No, the, the definition of earth removal is the extraction removal alteration materials, blah, blah, blah. Includes excavation, chipping and other alteration. So it's, it's, it's broad, the definition is.
Oh, it's already broad, so that it would be expanded to include blasting them.
So I'm, what I might suggest is what you're, well, A, the purpose might be restated and the purpose can certainly. Set out some preferences or when you get down to the limits on earth removal. Um, you know, we have one, two, three, you might be adding a four. That says in, in determining a special permit. Preference will be given to. You know, certain methodologies over other methodologies if, if, if alteration cannot be avoided, you know, I, I, I'll leave.
Minimum, minimum, re- minimal removal.
Yeah, I, I, so. Let me, let me just put that here too for you.
And Amy, Amy said her husband has some kind of miracle rock melting, um, uh, chemical that. Um, that could be used for some, some, uh, smaller scale applications, but. I think that, I think there's a lot of people in town that are, have been impacted by the blasting and the, and the chipping. wholesale, I think that, I think there's a lot of people in town that are, have been impacted by the blasting and the and the chipping over the last ten or fifteen years and they're sick of it and and if 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 there's some um reasonable accommodation to that here, um I think that would be well received, not that it's a prohibition, but that, you know, do you really need to remove every piece of ledge within?
Alright, well, I added
Any structure.
That, I added that maybe, you know, we add you know, preferences and it might go in a later section about the decision making, but that we express, you know, uh like, I don't know, just off the top of my head, large home review, when we look at the four things we're supposed to look at, we state some preferences of what we'd like to see in those things. And I don't think it's a problem for us in a bylaw to state preferences. It'll always be case by case.
Sure.
We we are at least pushing people in a direction in the way
That's right, and they need, I think they need help, hey, what do these people want? You can't necessarily just, just BS around it and keep it generic.
Alright, well then, um let's, let's, we'll put that, I'm I'm sorry, Cassandra, go ahead.
No, it's okay, I just wanted to mention uh two things before you continued it. Um, one, in the section that you're showing right now, you had a note to fill in the date um that the bylaw was adopted, I did some research and it was twenty twenty one.
Uh, what, right here?
You had asked me to find the date for that.
What was the date?
Twenty twenty one.
Not a specific date? We would need a specific date.
Okay, I can find the month and the day.
Yeah, alright.
And then second point was just um under section D, number four, subparagraph B. Um, it references the highway business district, but that has been eliminated, so we could take that out.
Where is that, D four?
D four B. A relatively minor edit.
Oh, yeah, so it's now says three A C here, okay.
Right, but in the beginning, it says in the H B.
Alright.
You can take out the H B.
Oh, the H B, so that's, oh, that, that's, that's We don't have to discuss that further, that just goes, alright. Alright, so
I had just have one, one quick addition to the exposed and and it's kind of like a wording thing, exposed and visible. And and I sent about this um uh quick email uh as I overheard people in the parking lot after our meeting last Monday. But they said like, kind of like, well, it's visible ledge, you know, and kind of, and if it's visible just to me, you know, and kind of in in the backyard, nobody else sees it, I can just take it out. And these, these kind of things, um I think is also what we kind of want to avoid. Yeah, and kind of not just uh arbitrary um removal of ledge. Um, and so I don't know whether we can straighten or or tighten the language there even more.
N- 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 well, I don't think we need to, it's, it's it's beginning with the regulation of all removal or chipping or alteration of exposed ledge, no matter where it is. However, when you get into this special permit process and you have to make a determination if it's more substantially detrimental, then on that case by case basis, you're gonna get into whether there's something that's way back in a backyard that isn't visible and part of the visual quality of the town i- is worth the same protection as something that is visible from the street. So those will be judgment calls made on a case by case basis.
It's the significance of the of the outcrop. You know, if it like, like Clark said, if if, you know, he's got one in his front yard, that's gonna be more significant than perhaps one on the, on at a, on another location in his property. It's probably gonna be more significant if it has some topography or adds some topography to an area. And if it's a flat ledge that's just underneath the 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 real shallow veneer of soil that's built up on it over over the years.
Well, in in my yard, I have a giant rock in my front yard, it's part of the visual quality of this property.
But that may not be bedrock, like you spoke to it, that could be a glacial erratic, that was just
Yeah, probably is, but
Retreating glaciers.
There's another small piece of exposed rock in my backyard that only I can see. And so if if I was asking to get rid of them both in the course of the special permit, you may say it's it's not substantially detrimental for me to cover up the one in the back, because nobody else sees it. But yes, taking away that rock in my front yard would be significant in terms of the visual quality of the street, so you know, you'll make those judgment calls case by case as they come up. And and that the one permit we did, which I I, you know, I don't know, by the way, Actors Row doesn't seem to be doing any redevelopment, so maybe, maybe it is, maybe I didn't notice, it didn't look like it was, but that permit may expire, but they had offered us to expose ledge in another area because they were taking away something that was visible from the street and they were exposing another area that was visible from the street. Um, whether it was in the way in the backyard, if the poolhouse had been way, way back where nobody saw it, we probably wouldn't have cared. Um, at that point, so. Alright, so um in terms of, so in getting, thinking about changes here, I'm 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 going to be out of town for the long weekend. I'll try, in between my work schedule, try to write up some things for Carolyn tomorrow. But I'm really going to rely on the rest of you to tackle the purpose and intent and these preferences that we might want to express. Um, I can maybe jot some quick thoughts, I'm not gonna do it quick on the fly right now, but um alright, so I I really am looking for the input of all of you for this. So with that, uh I'll make a motion that we uh continue the hearing for uh, what is it, article P B? Or to uh October sixteen at six thirty.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Me, Glassmore, aye.
Kevin Heine, aye.
Director Hobbs, aye.
Biggert, biggie, aye.
Okay, thank you, and so for next week, Cassandra, do we have any hearings on the sixteenth?
You do not.
Okay. So, uh I would like to take the two continued matters tonight first, get them out of the way. The mitigation, one, based on some comments I want to relay from the zoning board and hopefully they'll show up that night. I'll try to encourage that. Um, they had some comments, they didn't really oppose it, there wasn't any strong opposition, but there was just some clarifications in the language and we talked in in connection with that bylaw was, you know, the challenge of managing expectations of the butters going forward with this. You know, particularly, obviously, in the case where we're applying it to single family residences with large home review, that it gets carried away. And there was some discussion about the interaction of uh, you know, the large home review process and are we adding something to it? And uh, again, it'll be helpful that Carolyn's there so that we have it legally correct. We have four criteria we look at under large home review under that bylaw. The mitigation is only, I think, is going to be a relatively rare circumstance where, you know, a single family home, how large as it may be, is creating an impact offsite on town infrastructure or some town resource. I think those are gonna be rare, that we're gonna actually have mitigation in that. But um, in in the memo I circulated today, you saw some of the comments that came up last night with the zoning board, so think about those and um if there's nothing else, no minutes, no other discussions, we'll close this up and we'll see you next Wednesday.
Motion to adjourn.
Alright.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Alright, Tom Callahan, aye.
Glassmore, aye.
Kevin Heine, aye.
Birgit, you can vote too.
Um, Biggert, biggie, aye.
Okay, um, thank you for your attention to this, I appreciate that we we made a lot of progress here tonight, good, so. Oh, I will say this before we fully adjourn, is um a new thing came up today and we may rush in another bylaw change and have to have another section five hearing sometime in November. And this is what it is, that notwithstanding the preliminary review that what used to be known as D H C D, I'm not gonna try to give you the new initials. They gave a preliminary review and Cassandra was just telling me earlier that it was verbal, it was never in writing, but you know, they basically said that our MBTA community's bylaw was fine. And then the A G, of course, has approved the bylaw that cha- voted at town meeting, but now that that what was D H C D has come up with another thing pointing out a possible language changes we have to do because of the interplay of our water protection overlay district bylaw and the MBTA, because both overlays are in the same place or partly, partly or wholly in the same place. So the changes that we need are relatively minor, I have asked Carolyn today to do it, Cassandra assures me we can get this done in time. Uh, I will inform the select board and the zoning board tomorrow and the advisory committee that will be adding this. It's relatively minor housekeeping, but it's just to make sure that the interplay between the two overlay districts are in sync and satisfies D H C D. We'll circulate the change as soon as Carolyn drafts it, so um it's it's what this, the ideas of the changes are relatively minor, so I'm not expecting anything that's gonna be hard to absorb. So that that may bring us back to eight articles that go forward to town meeting. Alright, thank you all again, I'll see you next week.
Good night, Al.
Good night.